I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska means act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska means act is displayed on north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record, and our ask the limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks will be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
President.
Matt, Pam, Fred, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Here.
Our first item this evening, I'm very proud to have the opportunity to honor and recognize the 2018-2019 Concordia University Women's Basketball Team and the NAIA Division Two National Champion. I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Coach Olson, would you want to bring your team up maybe in kind of the U area? Come around. First of all, welcome and congratulations. I have a proclamation for you. And Councilmember Carl Miller was very instrumental in making sure we did this tonight. So I'll just read this to you. Whereas the 2018-2019 Concordia University Women's Basketball Team, capital thirty-five to three record, won the national association of collegiate athletics, NAIA, Division Two National Championship by defeating Southeastern University, Florida, with a score of sixty-seven to fifty-nine. And whereas the city of Seward, Nebraska is exceedingly proud to recognize the Concordia University Women's Basketball Team for these tremendous regular and postseason accomplishments. And whereas the city of Seward wants to recognize that coach Drew Olson for being named the NAIA Division Two Coach of the Year. And whereas the city of Seward also wants to recognize Grace Berry for winning the NAIA Division Two National Tournament In Dupree Award. And whereas the city of Seward recognizes Philly Lammers for being named the NAIA First Team All-American and Great Plains Athletic Conference GPAC Player of the Year. And whereas the city of Seward recognizes Taylor Cockrell for being named NAIA Honorable Mention All-American. And whereas Concordia University student athletes continue to excel in both academics and athletics. And whereas the city of Seward recognizes these Concordia University Women's Basketball Team members for being named Daktronics NAIA Scholar Athletes. And I apologize if I don't pronounce these all correctly. Maddie Daly, Colby DuVell, Maggie Foltz, Jaden Hyde, Philly Lammers, Riley Sybil, Jerica Teetz, Megan Deselmeyer, and Quinn Rogge. And whereas the city of Seward recognizes Concordia University Women's Basketball Team for winning their third consecutive GPAC regular season and conference tournament championships. And now therefore I Joshua like my mayor of the city of Seward, Nebraska, hereby encourage all citizens in our community to celebrate and honor the outstanding achievements of the 2018 and 2019 Concordia University Women's Basketball Team, both on and off the court. And thank Concordia University as they continue to represent Seward community on the national stage with class and integrity. Wait to focus and finish Bulldogs.
I don't really have a whole lot to say other than just thank you very much for all the support and recognizing this amazing group of women. We hope to continue to make our city proud. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to say for the whole meeting.
But don't kill off.
Alright, um, next we have item number two. Consideration of approval of draft minutes of April second, twenty nineteen.
To approve?
Second.
The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Congressman Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Next we have items three through seven of the consent agenda.
Vote.
Do a motion and a second. Do a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Congressman Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item number eight, public hearing. Consideration of tax increment financing application for Project Superior SFD Opto LLC. Andrew Willis is here, we have items A through C. Um, did you want to start, Andrew?
Yes.
Or did you want to begin?
I cannot, oh, go ahead and start then. Mayor of the council. Um, yeah, so to the Project Superior redevelopment agreement, redevelopment plan amendment before you tonight. I guess as a bit of procedural explanation, it's a little different what you're seeing tonight versus other projects. You know, typically we come with plan amendment, cost benefit analysis, redevelopment agreement all at one time. Tonight, all this before you is the redevelopment plan amendment with a cost benefit analysis. That was recommended for approval by the, by the planning commission, April eighth. The CRA will review the project, all the documents, including the redevelopment agreement, April thirtieth, assuming this all goes through tonight. And then the redevelopment agreement will be back in front of the council, scheduled right now for May seventh. So the, basically we're splitting this up into two, two sections and the reason is we're still fine tuning that redevelopment agreement, making sure we get a couple of these details worked out. So tonight, all this before you is the, is the plan amendment. Again, that would, that would amend the redevelopment plan that exists to include this project in it and look at the cost benefit analysis connected to it. And then the actual agreement, the contract will come back before you at a subsequent meeting. Going through, I think, you know, everybody's fairly familiar with the, this project. You've seen iterate, you know, different pieces of it. I was hoping to point out from a, from a TIF and redevelopment perspective, kind of the key differences, the key points of this project and the differences in this plan amendment itself compared to what we've seen in the past. And then I'll answer any questions you guys have. Because this is the first project in the rail campus, the first amendment to the redevelopment plan, there's a little bit more of the actual rail campus information included in exhibit B to the redevelopment plan amendment. And again, the idea here is just, this is amending that overall plan. So we really wanted to get that information into the redevelopment plan. And because this is kind of piece one of that overall development. So there's a lot more information that's not directly pertinent to this project, but again, sets up this overall, overall redevelopment of the rail campus area. The project itself, as we look through it, it kind of, it's, it meets all, you know, it's very much aligned with the comprehensive plan as this, as this lays out. It's approximately a hundred and five thousand square foot industrial building. Um, again, the first piece of the rail campus development. This would be, you know, commencing construction really as soon as possible, kind of, you know, on the timeframe, so that there would be a anticipated completion date of next summer. So we have the base year being two thousand nineteen. Um, partial valuation on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty taxes and then a full valuation thereafter for fourteen years, we'll see. So this is the kind of the first key difference I want to point out. We, we've got a base value of four hundred eighty thousand dollars, four hundred eighty thousand, four hundred dollars on this site. This is a approximately fifty-one million dollar project, project costs, um, as set on the TIF application. So when looking at the val, trying to value this, and there's just nothing else similar to this, of this size and scope of this building. So what we did is we looked at a couple of things. First, we had the county assessor run one of their, you know, one of their projections on this. Came up with about fifteen million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. So, um, we have fifteen million dollars on one end of this potential valuation. And then we looked at, just because of the size and scope of this and not having any comparables, oftentimes if we don't have anything else, what we'll do is, is just a, you know, as a reasonable guess is we'll use eighty percent of construction costs. But what we did here is we did sixty percent of construction costs, and that gives a twenty-four million dollar valuation. And again, there's, that's based on at least, it's, it, I would, I'd say I generally see eighty percent as a reasonable estimate if you don't have any other, you know, anything else in a commercial building. But we use sixty percent here. So what we have is we have fifteen million to twenty-four million dollars, and we've kind of created this range where we think it's going to end up. There's five point nine million dollars of TIF requested and eligible uses identified. That is, and, and that's really supported by that twenty-four million dollar valuation. Redevelopers aware that if it comes in at fifteen million dollars, that, that they will, it's really about three point seven million dollars in TIF. Um, so they will be covering the shortfall. However, because of just so unknown, we wanted to include that range in there, giving them a, you know, kind of a reasonable picture of where it might be. So that's a little different than what we've seen in the past. But again, I think that's, that, that's our basis for, for those kind of numbers on the valuation. The five point nine million dollars in TIF and otherwise, they, you know, kind of, they said that the rest of this is, the other forty-five millions really put in through investor equity. Again, I think I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we have representatives here from the redeeveler for more specific project questions. But the other piece, I guess, that we always look through, starting in exhibit D is the statutory requirements. And you guys have been through this as far as, you know, this is, the first thing we look at is whether there's any acquisition or disposal of public property. Clearly there is, and they're going through that process as far as selling this, this lot. So you guys are aware of that and going through that process. Um, from a population density perspective, this is a commercial project. However, note, it's anticipated this is going to create about ninety-five new jobs. Um, that should create some, some growth, and that's obviously part of the intended consequences, the desired consequences of this project means. But it did note it in there. Uh, land coverage wise, this is, um, about a little over fifteen acres of property, a hundred and five thousand square foot building in the I two district. So it meets all the necessary land coverage ratios. It's a permitted special use. Obviously, there's going to be some other permitting that you'll be hearing. But as far as, we don't see any zoning issues, assuming everything else goes through. And as far as traffic, street layouts and street grades, again, this being the beginning of this rail campus development, this is part of that master plan development. We anticipate all those, you know, the additional streets that are going to be as part of this, all those, all those, um, traffic, the traffic that will be increased is identified as part of this project. So that, um, the infrastructure that will be created utilizing that five point nine million dollars is the beginnings of, of the overall infrastructure that's needed. Cost benefit analysis, exhibit E. Again, what we've done is, as I mentioned, we have kind of two values set out. We've got that, what I, the minimum and then our potential maximum, fifteen million to twenty-four million in that range of where we think what's going to create that increment. So it's between two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual tax increment on the low side to almost four hundred thousand dollars in tax increment on the high side. That four hundred thousand dollars would be what's needed to reach the five point nine million dollars requested. And that's at that sixty percent, right, Andrew? Yeah, correct. Yep. And, um, and again, you know, looking through the cost benefit analysis, I'd be, I'd, you know, everything looks good. I mean, you know, this is a, we've got a, you know, we look at infrastructure, there's a lot, you know, that's what that five point nine million dollars is going to. So yes, when we look at this, there is going to be the infrastructure improvements needed in the rail campus. Um, it's necessary. A lot of this information in here, um, I took from the, uh, there was the economic development assessment of by MPD and some other documents. So that's where a lot of these numbers come from as far as the impacts on, you know, this has got a lot more detail. It's a larger project, I thought it needed more detail, but it also was probably beyond my, my scope. And so I used a lot of the economic impact assessment information that was already, that was done by the professionals. And so we see a lot of those, the numbers of the impacts in here. And then I guess, in addition to that, to me, you know, the, the main impacts in addition to that economic assessment that's been created, you know, again, this is the first project, this is really the catalyst for the overall rail campus development. That's not necessarily quantifiable, but, but, but it's a very important benefit when we look at this. Um, and then the, the increase, the potential increase of about ninety-five jobs. We don't know, some of this is still unknown as far as the impact on the student population. Uh, you know, the number in grade, we don't know what students are going to, that's what you create. It will, it will obviously have some impact. But, um, as now, as of now, no concerns have been identified. Um, assuming there's an equal distribution and everything looks good, there's no concerns identified. And, um, again, with ninety-five, ninety-five anticipated directly created jobs and then a fifty-one secondary jobs created from this project. Um, it's got, it's got a lot of growth, but that's, that's the, what's being anticipated or desired here. And, um, and again, that cost benefit analysis showed a lot of benefits, and I think it's, uh, it looks like it's worth, worth those costs. And, and with that brief over you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for?
Andrew, just for my own clarification and ignorance about the process, just three questions. So the, uh, whatever the county is collecting now off that piece of ground is based upon, you know, the, the current farmland rate, right? So that will, regardless of TIF, go up to that? To, what will, what will, what will they immediate, like, what will the county immediately be collecting taxes on?
So the, the four hundred eighty thousand dollar base value, that is, that, that's the anticipated base value. And so for the fifteen years, that won't change. County collects those, those, the taxes on that money, the four hundred eighty thousand dollars gets distributed out to the taxing jurisdictions normally.
Okay.
Everything above four hundred eighty then is used to pay off the TIF note. Uh, in this case, you know, again, with, if that's, if that hits twenty-four million, that would pay off that five point nine million dollars in TIF indebtedness. If it's less than that, it would pay off a portion of that. Again, maybe three point seven million based on the fifteen million dollar valuation. And then, uh, redevelopers covering all those costs no matter what, all five point nine million. If it, if it exceeds that, the way this is set up and the way that the redevelopment agreement will look, I mean, I, I don't know how likely this will exceed that. But if it does, then that money would be really, what we, we'd have to look at what that is and analyze it. But the, the agreement will be set up that council will have the option to identify other uses presumably in the rail campus area and really build that out even further. So to identify additional uses that, that the CRA would, would take on. But we don't worry about that until we actually, you know, see that, see if there's excess money there. But more than likely, we're looking at the four eighty divided regular and then up to everything else.
Which is more than it's currently valued at?
Yes.
So there will be an increase.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the expectation.
But there'd be, I mean, so, there's always a controversy somewhat over, over the TIF and the future tax dollars. But the reality is, is because of what, that the value of the ground before this sale was X.
Yeah.
Then after the sale, it's Y. That Y is what's being distributed among all the entities that receive property taxes. Now you're going to have Z, which will be the new property value. That's where the TIF increment comes in. So there actually will be an initial benefit, um, to everyone, but it'll just be marginal.
Right.
Based on that until the fifteen years runs. Now in theory, in some cases, not necessarily in this case, but in some cases, you could actually, evaluation jumps up at a real fast clip. They could pay that off sooner than fifteen years because they're paying the way that the property taxes are.
Right.
And that might pay off the note quicker. It's just, there's a lot of variables involved in that.
And, and in this case in particular, there is because it's a fifty-one million dollar build out of a, a very large scale construction that we just don't have anything to variable to. So again, fifteen seems very low to me. Uh, twenty-four at sixty percent value, I mean, maybe that's right. But again, it might be even higher than that, in which case that, that tip note will be paid off fast.
And, and that's common around the state where, because values, if you're using a conservative number initially and valuations go up at a quicker clip than was anticipated, rather than being fifteen years before all the entities receive the new property tax value, um, being spread out among them. It could actually happen in, in twelve years or ten years or whatever that may be.
Yeah. That was the second part of my second question. Thank you, Josh. So the, the first part of my second question. So since, since they're going to be self-funding their TIF, which is fairly unique. I mean, historically, from what we've, from what we knew with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just from a layman's standpoint, trying to understand the, the overall benefit to the, to the developer funding their own TIF is they ultimately will still save some money in taxes or interest that they would be paying themselves or?
Yeah, correct. I mean, from a, yeah, just from a pure financial way, they are getting that back. And, and this is probably more directed towards the business side of things. But usually, I mean, when you're looking at this, when you're looking at any project and you're looking at all those sort of gap funding, for lack of a better term, you're adding in your TIF or, you know, LB eight forty or whatever it is. I mean, overall, you're looking at return on investment. And so if you can say that five point nine gets us to whatever, whatever the investors need on return on investment, that's, that's usually the analysis that's going on. Um, and that's why it does matter, even though it's self-financed, the fact that they're getting repaid over fifteen years gets them to that level they need the investors to get at to start with. Now, I'm, I'm speaking generally here, um, you know, but that's typically how it, how it plays out.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, the Schuler project located in the Business Park zoning district, not I two.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions from the council or comments at this time? Go ahead. Andrew, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. So we have a presentation review of TIF application, review of redevelopment plan amendment and cost benefit analysis. And item B and item C is consideration of a resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment and adopting a cost benefit analysis for the redevelopment project. You don't add anything grab. So is there any other questions or comments at this point, or would someone like to? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. This is a public hearing, so before we get going here. Uh, it's a public hearing, so I'll go with the public comment portion of the public hearing. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on item number eight? And you're welcome to come up to the podium. Yes, welcome.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm Amy Patterson from the Schuler company. I've had the opportunity to speak at my colleague John Meserk's book last time, although I believe I met many of you about a month ago. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and for the agenda item to be reviewed regarding the redevelopment agreement and the TIF financing. I am happy to answer questions about the project itself as we go through the next couple of agenda items. But I wanted to stress our appreciation for the opportunity and the availability to take advantage of the tax increment financing. But for the TIF opportunity, our investment would not be feasible and our choice to locate the business here in Seward would not have been made within that same parameters. So Andrew covered everything very well in his explanation about our choices and the overall cost benefit analysis and the investment requirements for our board of directors. The incentive opportunities specifically with TIF were critical in finalizing the decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Yeah, appreciate you coming this evening.
Thanks.
With that, anyone else from the public wish to comment? If not, then I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing. And we move on into item C. Uh, would anyone like to introduce resolution?
I'll introduce resolution.
Alright, the resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero eight. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move. Second.
Do the motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Congressman Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks. Motion here.
Thank you. Uh, next, item number nine, this is also a public hearing. Consideration of special use permit for tractable land located in Seward Rail Campus to operate light industry type of industrial occupancy. Uh, this is lots one, two, block one, lots one, two, three, block four, Seward Rail Campus Highway Edition. Ed?
Good evening, council. This is a special use permit application by Schuler for tractable land located in Seward Rail Campus and South Highway fifteen, which is located in a Business Park zoning district and currently has I one limited industrial district to the south, C two highway commercial district to the south and east, and I two general industrial district to the west and north. As mentioned, the applicants proposing to build a new approximately a hundred and five thousand square feet light industrial building, which is only allowed in a Business Park zoning district with a special use permit. The project complies with the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map. Uh, planning commission held a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand nineteen, and recommended to approve the special use permit by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions or comments from the council? This is also a public hearing, so we'll take a moment here. Over the public comment portion of the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to comment on item number nine? Seeing no one, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and, uh, turn back to the council for any questions or comments, or if someone would like to make a motion.
Move to approve the special use permit?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Congressman Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item number ten is also a public hearing. Consideration of the final plot of Seward Rail Campus Highway Edition, planned unit development. And we have both Ed and Jake here. Go ahead.
Okay, this amendment was initiated by the city to design a mixed-use planned unit development to regulate development in the city's rail campus, beginning with the thirty acre Phase One in the Business Park District. The PUD overlay district is intended to provide flexibility in the design of planned projects, to permit innovation in project design that incorporates open space and other amenities, and to ensure compatibility of developments with the surrounding urban environment. The requirements of PUD run with the land regardless of the subsequent sale or conveyance of property. The PUD district, which is adopted by city council with recommendation of the planning commission, assures specific development standards for each designated project. The PUD also may be combined with a mixed-use district to allow a combination of use types not anticipated by conventional-based districts, and to disallow certain use types that could be incompatible with other desired use types. The mixed-use district may encourage co-location of living and working areas or activity centers that incorporate a variety of uses. I already gave you the surrounding zoning districts, and the city engineer Jake Bascha will present the plan.
Thank you, Ed. Jake, welcome.
Good evening. I think I've shown this PUD to several of you more than once. So just to clarify, the PUD is technically just the thirty acres of the rail campus that we are currently acting on and is currently platted that we are replating. Um, that is labeled the business center in our PUD. Um, one item brought up by Schuler is the concern about adjacent uses, particularly anything that will cause any pollution in the air. Um, so this is very easily done within this PUD to disallow or omit allowed uses, uh, which might include, uh, construction batch plant, uh, construction yard, um, heavy industry. Um, we could also add a note, um, I intend to also add a site note specific to air quality, um, within the areas, um, around Schuler. So that note will be forthcoming. Uh, we will also have several, um, work, I should say, we should have future opportunities to, um, edit this PUD as we continue to add, um, different areas to this PUD. Um, different properties as we go forward with plating those. I've gone over this PUD a few times in detail, so I'll just take any questions you have.
Any questions for either Ed or Jake?
So being new, this PUD totally and completely controlled by the city. Yes?
Well, yeah, I'm going to explain how that works.
Yeah, um, so we as the developer continue to control the PUD. So as long as we hold property out at the PUD, we are the controlling entity.
And how does that change as?
And how does that change as we become the lesser owner?
It shouldn't change at all.
Shouldn't change, okay.
The PUD actually has the permitted uses that are allowed, and it states any uses that aren't listed are not allowed.
But they could be special permitted.
Yes, Ed?
Yes. Well, technically. For instance, if a light industry such as Schuler would come in, as if they didn't now, and we had already laid down the PUD under our current zoning in these districts, it'd still require a special use permit, just like it does now. And so anything that's an allowed use that's explicitly listed, that requires a special use permit, would still require that special use permit.
And that's noted in the usage notes? It's not allowed.
That's not allowed?
Right.
If it's not allowed, it's not allowed.
Great.
I did forget to mention the public, uh, planning commission held a public hearing on April eighth and recommended approval by unanimous vote.
And this is also, as mentioned, a public hearing, so I'll take a moment here to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to comment on item number ten, you're welcome to approach the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number ten. Uh, do you have any other questions or comments from the council?
Okay. Just for clarification purposes, the reason that we continue to want to limit uses in proximity to our Schuler project that we're working on is due to the food-grade nature of the facility. It's going to be extremely clean facility that has to have, you know, finished food-grade cleanliness on both the internal and external sides. And so anything in the atmosphere, anything else that would have impact on that through their systems is going to have an effect. It's not meant to keep out competitors or anything like that, it's truly to protect their process. Um, and so, uh, we'll continue as we expand on the PUD, as we have acquired, will acquire the, what we know as the Egger property and the Heath property. The PUD will expand later on, and we'll continue to lay those out and work with Schuler, uh, on those proximities as we build out the rail campus over time.
Any other questions or comments? We have two items, we have ten A and ten B are both ordinances, so if you have any question or comments, that'd be great, we can do that right now, otherwise I would need someone to introduce ordinance under ten.
I'll let him do so.
Okay. In order to approve the platent title, Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition, City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as here and after set forth located south of Walker Road and west of Highway fifteen to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for an effective date hereof, in order of the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ten, and the title is hereby approved and a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
I move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, no one's seen or from Schmidt Harris.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ten, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ten be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, no one's seen or from Schmidt Harris.
Okay, well, also, item B, which is consideration ordinance vacating the right-of-way for Aspen Street within the rail campus addition. Is there any questions or comments on that? Yes, Greg.
Just because we didn't hit on, we were speaking. As you know, the original plat of the rail campus had a cross in it. This removes the western portion of Aspen Street. This establishes lot, what will be referred to as Lot One of this plat. Once this Lot One is established tonight, then we can have finalization of the title commitment and then fully transfer the property, uh, over to S F D. So that's what we're doing and why we're, we're vacating this roadway tonight and doing the plat which already.
Any questions or comments, or if someone would like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll argue.
The ordinance? One second. In order to vacate a portion of city right-of-way and of Aspen Street between the West Rail line of Pine Street and the West line of Seward Rail Campus Highway Edition Final Plat, as here and after set forth, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eleven, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
I move, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, no one's seen or from Schmidt Harris.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eleven, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I move for approval.
I got it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eleven be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, no one's seen or from Schmidt Harris.
Thank you. Next, we have a surprise public hearing. Consideration of ordinance approving a text amendment to the City of Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance, Article nine R three, Urban Residential Mixed Density District, Section four ten dash nine point two, Site Redevelopment Regulations, Article ten R four, Urban Residential Multi-Family District, Section four ten dash ten point two, Site Redevo, Site Development Regulations, Article thirty-four, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Section four ten dash thirty-four point four, Parking Facility Location Subsection A Residential Parking. And we have Ed, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me here, this can be a little confusing, and that confusing for planning commission, so I'll try to explain it better. This text amended application was submitted by Plex Homes, Thomas Kaden. Mr. Kaden's a local developer who's been very active in the community helping to plan and construct needed housing for Seward. During his research, Kaden discovered and brought to the attention of city staff the fact that the city's ULDO has some conflicting regulations in reference to required off-street parking. City staff are already in the process of updating the ULDO, uh, and felt that this matter, uh, was important that we needed to bring it to you now. The city's current ULDO Article nine, which is the R three, Site Development Regulations and Article ten, R four, states that the maximum amount of total parking located in the street yard is fifty percent, can be up to fifty percent for multifamily occupancies. What is the street yard? If you go to Article two, ULDO definitions, it is the distance between a lot line adjacent to a public street and the wall or forcade of a building parallel to such lot line. If the building wall is not parallel to the lot line, the street yard depth shall be the distance between the street lot line and a parallel line that equals the average distance of the building wall or forcade from the street lot line. Which interprets, too, the street yard can either be the front yard or the street-side yard. Real definition for yard is that portion of a lot that lies between a lot line and the corresponding building setback line or the required landscape area. This area shall be unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as may be specifically provided for or required by this chapter. Okay, the front yard is per explanatory, self-explanatory. The yard along the block face to which a greater number of structures are oriented, or the yard along a street line that has a smaller horizontal dimension. Definition for street-side yard, on a corner lot, the space extending from the front yard to the rear yard between the street-side yard setback line and the street-side lot line. This should not be confused with the city right-of-way area, which is the area between a property line on one side of the street and the property line across the street. That is the complete right-of-way area, includes the street, the curbs, and whatever grass there may be between property lines from one side of the street to the other. Okay, then we get to Article thirty-four, which is off-street parking. Section four ten thirty-four point four, Parking Facility Location. Off-street parking areas for multifamily or group residential uses shall be at least sixty from any main building. Here's the conflicting part, shall not be located within a required front yard or street-side yard. That conflicts with Article R three and R four, which states it can have up to fifty percent of parking in those areas. But Article thirty-four states it is not allowed in the front yard or street-side yard. The zoning department believes that the ULDO intended to regulate overall development and off-street parking to limit the amount of total off-street parking by allowing fifty percent to be located in the street yard. It is suggested that regulations should state that fifty percent of required off-street parking shall be allowed in the street-side yard. It is agreed that no off-street parking facility should be allowed in the front yard of a residential zoning district other than the private driveway of a residence. City staff researched other city zoning regulations, referenced multifamily required off-street parking facilities allowed in the street yard, and discovered the following. Uh, we researched ten, uh, cities zoning regulations. Lincoln allows it under certain restrictions, Beatrice does not. York allows it in the back or side yard only and does not designate between side yard and the street-side yard. Nebraska City, yes, allows fifty percent of front yard, including right-of-way and sixty percent of combined side and rear yard. Grand Island, yes, allowed in side yards, does not designate between the two. Gretna, yes. La Vista, yes, allows off-street parking inside yards, does not designate between the two. Blair, yes, under conditional use permit. Wahoo, yes, inside and rear yards. Crete, yes, in rear and front yards. And Hastings, yes. Planning commission held a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand nineteen, and recommended to amend only Article thirty-four. Section four ten dash thirty-four point four, Parking Facility Location, to strike the sentence and shall not be located within a required front yard or street-side yard. And voted by majority vote to make that recommendation to the council. I'll send, answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Ed. So Ed, that would basically just allow like fif, up to fifty percent, right?
Of the required.
Either the front or the side?
Technically, yeah.
Okay.
And again, it's in the private property, street-side yard, nothing on the city right-of-way whatsoever.
So this would be like, like, say that you have what we call the parking, you know, between sidewalk and curb, which is city right-of-way.
Correct.
This would be beyond that.
Right.
But in that, the person's the front yard.
Or street-side yard.
Or street-side yard.
Correct.
Now, to get to that point, would it allow someone to pave like from the street to that point?
A driveway, like any other residential.
But it'd be a driveway, not, not going across the curb, across the sidewalk into the front yard, it'd have to be access from the driveway, right?
You could have a driveway from the front yard or the street-side yard.
Okay, but it'd have both, but that'd be a driveway.
Correct.
Right, it couldn't just be a whole paved area that goes into the front yard.
Right.
Okay.
A driveway entrance.
Gotcha.
An access area.
Ed, so if you had a driveway and then, you see this, and how this is another whole third lane for like your RV. That does not have a separate driveway to it, it's kind of just an extension of the driveway itself over in the beyond?
Once you get past that private property line, you're in either your front side yard, you're either in the front yard or your street-side yard.
But you wouldn't have to have a separate driveway down to the street for that?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, so basically they could stretch it out, the whole side yard, and pack four cars if they had space.
Well, we've, we've got regulations for typical width of driveways.
But it has to be paved, it has to be a driveway?
Yes.
Greg?
Just noting to councilman back's question, only for multifamily in it. This is only for multifamily, so I'm assuming they're not going to be, hopefully they're not parking RVs or anything else next to apartment buildings. I think we have restrictions, I think you can only park an RV next to certain areas and in certain districts too.
And during, and during certain months of the year as well.
And it can't come out past the front of the building, basically, right?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of this public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to comment on item number eleven, please come to the podium, state your name and address, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council, I'm Thomas Kaden with Plex Homes. Uh, as Ed stated, um, we, while we were, I guess, designing our parking lot, the architect found that there's some conflicting, um, language in, in the, in the code, and so we just needed to bring this forward to you guys and, and get this, um, decided upon, and obviously, it would benefit the, the, the community to, to be able to strike the sentence of not allowing, um, it in Article thirty-four. And, uh, I guess that's kind of, that explained it pretty well. The one thing I did want to mention was, I know that, uh, planning zoning, um, got a little confused on, uh, right-of-way parking and, and and the, the, um, parking the setback, and so i- if you drive around Seward, a lot of the existing apartments, they have what they, what you would call right-of-way parking. That just basically comes right off directly from the street into the, um, into the space, but this is actually, you're pulling into the yard. So you'll have the twenty-five, you know, easel of the city, and then you have the twenty-five foot setback, um, from the property line. Um, and so basically what this is, is obviously just allowing us to, to park cars in that twenty-five foot setback, and so with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Thomas?
Tom?
Yes.
Thomas, can you state your address for the right?
Eleven nineteen, I guess, Seward.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item number eleven? Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number eleven. Does the council have any other questions or comments on this item?
Pictures would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because it's really, it's confusing.
Yeah.
You know, I think I understand it, and, and what we're talking about, that actually pulling up a block map, showing me a house, showing me what's what. So we understand, because Thomas obviously is putting up a, I'll call it a large development over by Concordia, and how does that affect the parking along Columbia? Does it change, what, what does that do? And I don't know that I have a complete, uh, full understanding of what's going on here.
The parking, is it coming up?
Yeah, it's coming up, I can show you, right here's a picture of where the right-of-way is.
I think the, the point you're at though is that we're talking about parking on the property owner's side of the sidewalk essentially.
Correct.
That's, okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
That helps clarify, and that was, I think, part of the confusion with the planning commission. Because, you know, in theory, you know, you can move that sidewalk back and put, let's say, diagonal parking just off the street, or literally on the street if you wanted to, and then you can put a sidewalk and put more parking on the other side of the sidewalk. This is just talking about the other side of the sidewalk, if I understand that correctly.
Okay, here's a picture. Corner lot, you've got your front yard right here. Over here on the street side is your street-side yard. Again, the right-of-way is between the property line right here and across the street property line. That's where sometimes people will apply to get their off-street parking approval. That is public parking for anybody, right here. Again, here is the street-side yard, which is based on the zoning district, R three and R four, it's twenty-five foot, same as the front.
What about sidewalk?
Sidewalk will be on the internal side there, in that little strip.
The standard sidewalk is, uh, eight and twelve from behind the curb, in the right-of-way.
So that whole street-side yard could be just paved and it's just basically parking then, no yard at all, a yard becomes?
There is a landscaping, uh, uh, depth requirement. For R four, I believe it's fifteen feet.
It'd be similar to where, where his property is going to be on across the street to the east, where there's just a parking lot for the dorms.
For the dorms.
There's a curb, there's grass, the sidewalk, then parking, and that's kind of over.
There's some shrubs, there's some shrubs there, grass, landscaping, then the parking.
Have you brought into consideration the water runoff of the extra concrete and where it's going to go?
We have not looked specifically at that yet, no.
This is just clearing, cleaning up an ordinance.
But I'm the same. You are a lot of cleaning work, aren't you?
If I can bring up the map and see where Seward is on there.
I don't, here's what I would say, I, I don't know that it's, Kelly, I don't know that it's appropriate to get too far into a particular project. The application is not for a project.
For text amendment.
Yeah. What you'd also see, just so you get an idea of what councilman Schmidt was talking about with a project like this, is most likely you'd see one drive on the side yards, street-side yard. it's most likely you'd see one drive on the side yards, street-side yard, so one driveway there, and then one driveway in the front yard, so you'd have two driveways, one on each end.
Correct.
Does that help, Chris, was visualizing?
That's what I thought we were talking about, but I didn't clarify. Thank you for having my picture, Ed.
Yeah, it's all in the ULDO.
You just asked for it, and we're going to, you know.
So with that, is there any other questions or comments, or would someone like to introduce the ordinance for item eleven?
Can I ask one more?
Yeah, of course.
This is all clear. On that picture, on that, let's just say the side yard. The actual driveway itself could extend, you could access those parking spaces from the entire line of that side yard. In other words, it's just not one driveway you drive in, it's just like you pull up to Dairy Queen.
No, it isn't.
No, they can't do that. Okay.
There'll be a, there'll be a singular driveway on that street-side yard.
Singular driveway, okay, that's what I wanted.
And then it will pull in, pass the right-of-way, and then you'll have your parking lot.
Thank you.
But I do agree in the future, to have a picture at head time, it'd be nice to have it rolled out and everything.
Well, yeah, and this is an odd situation, because we're looking at a, at changing the code, uh, which came up because someone was doing a project, but we didn't necessarily want to tie this to that project, so. It's a little bit of an odd situation, but no.
Especially when it's contradictory, and trying to explain the contradiction makes it hard.
That's a good point. Any other questions or comments, or would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll argue so.
In ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter four, ten, zoning and subdivision, article thirty-four, to amend street-side yard parking restrictions for multifamily residential uses, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance, as is read by title, is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twelve, and the title is hereby approved and a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
I'll move second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please. Again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twelve be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes. The next item twelve is a public hearing. Consideration of a special use permit for auto body repair occupancy, uh, six twenty-one Jackson Avenue, lot one and four, block seven, original town. Uh, Ed, would you like to get us started?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special use permit.